Good morning. We're going to get started now. We have established our quorum. Council will now come to order. Thank you very much. To give round of vacation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Chandra Williams of United Missionary Baptist Church. She is here today as a guest of Councilman Thomas. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors, please rise.
Let us pray. O thou in whose presence my soul takes delight, in whom in affliction I call, my comfort by day and my song in the night, my hope, my salvation, my awe. To the only wise God our Father, today we come humbled before you lifting up our city and those in authority who govern it. God, we come to you this morning recognizing that you are sovereign, you see all, and you can do what you want, when you want, and how you want. We come to you because you are omniscient and omnipotent. God, our city is facing challenges, and we are going through unprecedented times. We are facing crucial challenges within our educational system, its building, staff, and students. We are facing challenges with homelessness, affordable home ownership, and tangled titles. We are facing challenges with parenting and our young people, challenges with the development in our city and the unification around it. It is affecting every race and every generation. We are facing challenges with the drugs and the open market of heroin, opioids. We are facing challenges with mental health in our city, challenges with all violence, whether it be gun violence, domestic, carjackings, home invasions, elder abuse, hate crimes, and more. We are facing challenges. We're facing challenges with supporting our arts and culture, challenges with our small businesses, and even challenges with transitioning our local government officials. But the good news this morning is that we can come boldly to you and ask for anything. So today, we ask now, God, that you heal our city. We ask that you would give this governing body, the body that represents every corner, block, community, and neighborhood of Philadelphia, give them what they need in order to do what they have been elected to do. Give them the courage, the wisdom, the strategy, the strength, and the right community and corporate partners to make the right decisions. We pray that you would touch their individual bodies right now. Give these people whatever they need mentally, physically, spiritually, and financially. Touch their individual families, their spouses, their children, and even those who are amongst us who may be caregivers of their parents. Touch those who are retiring, and we pray a special blessing upon their transitions. We need you, God, like we never needed you before, so we ask that you hear and answer our prayers. In the name that is above every name, we ask this prayer, and we say amen.
Amen. Pastor Williams, thank you so much. Really appreciate your spiritual guidance today. Council will be at ease. Thank you very much. And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 13, 2023, and Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
May I, Mr. President, have a visit to the Journal?
Meeting of Thursday, April 13, 2023 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the Meeting of Journal, the meeting, Thursday, April 13, 2023, stand approve, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, on behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence to be...
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Bass may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. And our next order of business is communications. And I would ask the clerk to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession.
I have no communications today, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business, Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas. Did you need to be recognized?
Briefly, Council President, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Just in the spirit of honoring Philadelphians and keeping some of that positive energy in city council, I wanted to take a moment today just to recognize Diane Scott, who's here today. Diane, for those who don't know, is somebody who's been a staple in the community for 25 years. She's somebody who operates athletic recreation centers at 26 and Master. She has a lot of fans and folks in the community who appreciates her. And Diane, almost a year ago, lost her grandson to an unfortunate situation, and despite that loss, her and her family have continued to be pillars in the community and continue to do good work. So Diane, if you're here, can you stand up so we can give you a round of applause, as well as the family and friends who came down? Colleagues, I know we're all very busy, but anybody who could stay after council today just to take a picture with Diane and thank her for her service and what she continues to do for the city of Philadelphia despite some of the grieving that her and her family has gone through would definitely be appreciated. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Council. Congratulations. Awesome. Thank you. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered by members today.
Councilman Thomas offers two resolutions. A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the champion of the week, Diana Garcia, the principal of Willard Elementary in Kensington, for being the recipient of the 2023 Lindbeck Award for Distinguished Principal Leadership.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to hold hearings examining the rise of paper tags to thwart criminal and safety measures that allow for the safe use of our city's streets by all residents.
Today's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers three bills and two resolutions. And titled an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the St. Joseph's University master plan related to a proposed residence hall and student center and the addition of six existing buildings to the master plan.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance establishing a no semi-truck parking regulation on both sides of North 75th Street between Brookhaven Road and Brentwood Road.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance discontinuing a...
Mr. Decker, hold one more second. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Yes, Council President, I'm sorry. Just wanted to speak a little bit about the resolution I introduced today.
Did you?
Just briefly.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So, first of all, thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues, and everybody who co-sponsored the resolution. Earlier last week, Memphis passed driving equality legislation, and we've been in dialogue with cities all across the country around driving equality and other traffic-related measures. As the Chair of the Streets and Services Committee, one of the things that we did back in 2020 was examine some of the issues that we were dealing with as it relates to hit-and-runs, traffic, and other issues that were creating problems as it relates to how we commute and travel across the city of Philadelphia. The purpose of this bill is to do a deeper dive into an issue that's happening in urban areas all across the country. When we went to Camden, they talked about similar issues. When I talked to council members in Memphis, they talked about similar issues with the fake tags. When we talked to folks in New York, as well as in Delaware, similar issues. The purpose of this resolution is to do a deep dive into all the different parts of government that can have an impact on this catastrophe, so we can get it under control in Philadelphia, and then hopefully make recommendations on what other municipalities across the country could do to address an issue that's perpetuating a crime in the city of Philadelphia, but an issue that has nothing to do with the driving equality legislation. So the purpose of this resolution is to make sure that we're able to define what direction we're going in with driving equality, as well as ensure that the public understands that the fake tag crisis that we're dealing with has no correlation to the legislation. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, colleagues, for co-sponsoring this resolution.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, did you need to speak?
Yeah, I was waiting on the resolution, sir.
Okay. And Councilman Johnson, you also...
Yeah, I would like a point of personal privilege just for acknowledgement, if that's okay, Council President.
Okay.
I just want to take a moment to acknowledge I'm an individual who has served more than 33 years in this particular body, but also recently retired as a Director of Government Affairs for the Philadelphia National Airport, but also served as the clerk and rose to the position of Chief of Staff for former Council President Ann Werner. And she has also been a dedicated and loyal public servant when it came to moving the city of Philadelphia forward, but also addressing a variety of issues. Since I've been a young man working in South Philadelphia throughout the Second Council district, and she hails from southwest Philadelphia, and I want to welcome her back to this body and give her her acknowledgement for her hard work and her dedication, and just ask if everyone could acknowledge Ms. Mary Ann Mahoney. Can you stand, Ms. Mary Ann Mahoney, who most of us know? And I want to thank you. Thank you for your hard work and your dedication, Mary Ann, and we appreciate you. You have a lot of relationships that you have built in this body, but most importantly, it was your dedication and your passion, your commitment to improve the quality of life of those that we represent in the Second Council district, as well as those you have supported in the city of Philadelphia as a whole. And you have always had a laser-like focus on providing quality, quality constituent services, which most district members know. At the end of the day, that's the bread and butter that will make sure you keep coming back to this body if you want to serve how you serve your constituents. So thank you very much, Mary Ann, and continue to keep up the good work, and God bless you in your retirement. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker.
Councilman Jones also offers an ordinance discontinuing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of North 75th Street between Brookhaven Road and Brentwood Road.
Verdict committee.
And two resolutions on behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution authorizing and ratifying Council President Clark's participation on behalf of and as representative of city council in all proceedings relating to the decision of the zoning board of adjustment with respect to 1600 East Burke Street.
Next week's calendar.
And on his own behalf, a privileged resolution honoring Dr. Karia Johnson, principal of Overbrook High School, for receiving the 2023 Lindbeck Award for Distinguished Principals.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, Dr. Johnson is for Overbrook, the Joe Clark of Overbrook. She loves deeply all of the students that go there and really takes to heart their problems. She is the reason I came up with the two bookbag theory, that the bookbag one is filled with books for the lessons of the day, and the second bookbag is bringing to school some of the troubles from home. And she, every day, unpacks that. And for her to receive the Lindbeck Award is truly appropriate. She's putting that $20,000 into renovating Overbrook's library, which has fallen in ill-repair. Kathy Gilmore Richardson used to teach there, so she knows, and Isaiah Thomas toured Overbrook with us during the pandemic and right after. So it is worthwhile. But for me, her fixing that library is important because I think I was the only person who cut class and hid in the library, where I learned how to play chess, where I learned appreciation for books. And so I'm truly, truly thankful to her for making that a safe space for future students that if they want to leave, they don't have to go and leave the building, but they can go and be in a safe space. So, Dr. Johnson, we appreciate you and keep up the good work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to Councilmember Jones for your leadership. Good to know that both of us toured overbrook high school for a short stint. Overbrook is producing great people. Councilmember Jones talked about the Lindbeck Award for Principals, and our champion of the week, Dr. Diana Garcia, just walked in. Doc, can you raise your hand and be recognized for us real quick? Dr. Diana Garcia is the principal at Willard Elementary School. She is our champion of the week this week. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge her because she clearly has to get back to the business of our children, but she is our champion of the week this week. She's a product of the school district of Philadelphia. She does a great job at her school, Willard Elementary, and she is the person who we wanted to honor for the great work that she do serving the city of Philadelphia, but most importantly, mentoring our children. Can we give Principal Garcia a round of applause, please? Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lozada.
Yes, I'd like to also thank Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for recognizing Diana Garcia, who is Principal Garcia to many, but to me, she's a sister. She's a friend. She's a mentor. She is present at every single point of every child's life, even after they have left her building. She is someone that people can come to and rely on for good guidance and just an ear to lean on when you're not having a good day. And so I appreciate you. I love you. Thank you for all you do, and this is a recognition that is very, very, very much deserved.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, and that will be on today's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers an ordinance approving free multi-year agreements with the Federation Internationale, the Football Association, and any amendments and addenda thereto, as well as ancillary agreements with other parties concerning the participation of the city in hosting and staging the 2026 FIFA World Cup.
Verdict committee.
Councilwoman Lozada offers a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3418, 3420, and 3422 Kensington Avenue located in the Seventh Council district.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2032 East Boston Street located in the Seventh Council district.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gauthier offers one bill and two resolutions. An ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, and maintenance of various encroachments in the vicinity of 3931 Walnut Street.
Verdict committee.
And a non-privileged resolution renaming the 700 block of North 39th Street Honorable Charles L. Durham Way.
Next week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and thanking Gwenny Love Owens on the occasion of Earth Day for her work on environmental justice and sustainability.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Driscoll offers one bill and one resolution. An ordinance amending Section 9208 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Cafes by permitting sidewalk cafes to be maintained on Frankfurt Avenue, both sides from Harbison Avenue to Sheffield Avenue. Cotman Avenue, both sides from Erdrick Street to Leon Street. Ryan Avenue, both sides from Frankfurt Avenue to Leon Street. Robbins Avenue, both sides from Frankfurt Avenue to Mulberry Street. Sackett Street, both sides from Frankfurt Avenue to Leveck Street. And the area bounded by Frankfurt Avenue, Leveck Street, Hawthorne Street, and Hellerman Street.
Verdict committee.
And a privileged resolution proclaiming May 2023 is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Philadelphia to pay tribute to the rich history and significant contributions made by generations of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to our country, Commonwealth, and city.
This week's calendar.
Councilman Squilla offers an ordinance amending Section 14502 of the Philadelphia Code entitled CTR Center City Overlay District by amending the South Street Head House Square area.
Verdict committee.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports on committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for report from the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs, to which is deferred Bill Number 220969, and titled an ordinance authorizing the Commission of Public Property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to accept a historically designated building from 2000 Arch Associates Limited Partnership, which will move and reinstall the building on city property. Respectfully reports that it is considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 220969.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 220969. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and this calendar will be placed on our first reading calendar to date. today. That concludes our reports on committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee was suspension of the rules have, have been deemed to have had its first reading. It will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, will you please read any other bills on the first reading calendar today?
Bill number two three zero one five zero entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three from the General Fund Certain All City Offices, Departments, Boards, and Commissions, and the Grants Revenue Fund Certain All City Offices, Departments, Boards, and Commissions to the General Fund Certain All City Offices, Departments, Boards, and Commissions, the Hotel Room Rental Tax Fund Certain All City Offices, Departments, Boards, and Commissions, and the Grants Revenue Fund Certain All City Offices, Departments, Boards, and Commissions.
Thank you. Chair agrees. This bill will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolution on our second reading and final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being brought up from second reading to final passage calendars today. Numbers, two three zero two eight two, two three zero two eight three, two three zero two eight four, two three zero two eight five, two three zero two eight seven, two three zero two eight eight, two three zero two eight nine, two three zero two nine two, and two three zero 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 nine double A. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you very much. We will now move to our public comment session, uh, but before, considering the resolutions and bills we, we, we will consider on public comment, we'll have certain guidelines. Your public comment must concern matters. Thank you. From the second reading and final passage calendar today, um, all speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you're not already signed up for your today's session, you can do so now by giving your name to the Sergeant of Arms at the table set up outside of the council chamber. Once you've signed up, you will be called in order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Uh, we have a relatively significant number of individuals testifying today, so I would like, like to alter the timeline to two minutes. Um, please address your testimony to reflect a two-minute timeline. Uh, once you've signed up, you'll be called, um, in order, which you will speak. In order to be fair, to all those wishing to speak, we intend to hold faithfully to that timeline. So, when you begin to speak, uh, you will see a green light on the device on the podium. Um, the, when the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks, and when that light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Uh, we also reserve the right pursuant to our rules, uh, to alter repetitious comment to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
The first speaker today, Mr. President, is Kay Yun, commenting today on resol, resolution number two three oh three one seven.
Good morning.
My name is Kay Yun.
Please proceed.
All right. My name is Kay Yun, and I'm a longtime Philadelphia resident and volunteer at Asian Americans United. I'm here today to show my support for Councilmember Mike Driscoll's resolution two three zero three one seven regarding making May two thousand twenty-three AAPI Heritage Month. Asian Americans are one of the fastest-growing demographic groups in the United States, and is, it is important that our history and diverse heritages in this country are honored, taught, and celebrated. I'll be honest with you, though. I'm far too impatient to be okay with only having Heritage Months for demographic groups such as ours, as I believe strongly that the history of all groups in this country should be a permanent, fully-accepted part of our children's and youth's education and cultural landscape. Asian American history continues to be unknown by many Philadelphians and Americans, and stereotypes and the perpetual foreigner status persists for members of our Asian communities here in Philly and across the U.S. In fact, children's and young adult books about Asian American history and Asian American cultures and families are being banned in many school districts. Therefore, until we live in a world where Asian American heritage and history are in, are an integrated and non-marginalized part of American history, then we will need a month like AAPI Heritage Month. If Philadelphia City Council is to rightfully pass a resolution honoring Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, then it is also, it should also take critical steps in ensuring that predominantly Asian American neighborhoods like Chinatown are protected and preserved. I strongly urge you to speak out and vote no against the proposed basketball arena that the Sixers want to build at Tenth and Cuthbert Streets. The arena would destroy the cultural fabric of Chinatown and drive out longtime small businesses and multigenerational families. Chinatown is one of the few neighborhoods in Philadelphia where I and many other Asian American Philadelphians feel safe and accepted for who we are. But this isn't just about our feelings, it's about doing what's right. Philadelphia's Chinatown is over a hundred fifty years old and has a strong community of residents of all ages, and various languages are spoken and different religions are practiced there. It's a physical and home, it's a physical home and cultural and spiritual center for many Asian Americans in the city and in the Philadelphia region. If we want to be a better, more vibrant city, we need to start by standing up against billionaire interests that seek to build an arena that over ninety percent of residents, business owners, and, and visitors in Chinatown don't even want.
Thank you.
And standing up for a longtime community of hard-working, tax-paying Asian American residents who have a history of being marginalized by government and society. So, please help all of Philadelphia walk the walk by using your voice and power to stop the Sixers Arena in the heart of our city and to save Chinatown. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony.
The next speaker is Will Gross, commenting on resolution two three oh three one seven.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Will Gross. Uh, I'm a small business owner, a Democratic Committee person, and a member of the Asian Pacific Islander Political Alliance of Pennsylvania. I'm here to testify on a resolution two three zero three one seven. I am the son of a Chinese immigrant. My mother immigrated to Philadelphia from Taiwan in nineteen seventy-three, and I am pleased to see council recognizing AAPI Heritage Month. As the son of a Chinese immigrant, Chinatown has always been a place for me and my family to connect with our culture. Chinatown is, is vital to my life and is vital to the cultural fabric of our city. The proposed Sixers Arena is an existential threat to the ecosystem of this one hundred and fifty-year-old community, and to be clear, if destroyed, Chinatown cannot be replaced. It seems each generation of Philadelphians is tasked with protecting our Chinatown from devastating development, whether it's a casino or a baseball park, an arena or the expressway that my parents protested in the nineteen seventies, which tore the neighborhood in two. It is now our turn. Will we protect the working families and working people of Chinatown, or will we stand by? Chinatown and the people of Philadelphia are united against this arena. We have been clear time and time again that a project like this would destroy the ecosystem of our community. It is paramount that AAPI Heritage Month not only be recognized in name, but also in action. To preserve AAPI culture and its community, we must stand with Chinatown and with the people of Philadelphia. We must oppose this arena. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Ling Tran, commenting on resolution two three oh three one seven.
Hello, my name is Ling Tran.
Good morning.
Oh, good morning. Oh, okay, cool. Thank you, cool, thank you. Uh, my name is Ling Tran. I am a Philly resident and volunteer with the Asian Pacific Islander Political Alliance. I'm here to testify on resolution twenty-three oh three seventeen. I do not live in Chinatown, yet in my heart I call it home, and I am pleased to see the council recognizing AAPI Heritage Month. Chinatown as a community matters a great deal to me. Living in Philly, I've experienced racism that many AAPI folks can testify, um, and identify with. Chinatown is the only place where I feel safe visiting to just breathe and be me. My family came to the U.S. as refugees of Chinese descent. In my youth, Saturdays in Chinatown were a family affair. My cousin, sister, and I attended Chinese school there while my parents and relatives ran errands. Going to Chinatown was special. This was the day of the week where I got to see my family own their space with ease and dignity. My parents and relatives also had weddings at neighborhood venues like Joy Sing Lau and Ocean Harbor. In Chinatown, I love hearing the symphony of languages spoken, Chinese dialects, Vietnamese, Cambodian, or some remix of those languages with English. My first job and how I learned Asian American history was there. These experiences imbued in me cultural pride and education, establishing Chinatown as a sanctuary. It is integral to my AAPI cultural heritage, to my belonging, which is why the proposal for the arena is a kiss of death to this community and my sense of place. Chinatown and Philadelphia are united against the arena. It said no, time and again. A project like this would destroy our community. Recognizing AAPI heritage in name only is virtue signaling. To preserve AAPI culture and community, we are counting on you to stand with Chinatown, to stand with Philly, and to oppose the arena. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I have, I would like to be excused to leave to do, um, district council business, and I'd like to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. At least she'll be granted.
The next speaker is Jenny Zhang, commenting on resolution two three oh three one seven.
Um, good morning. My name is Jenny Zhang. And I am a Philadelphia resident, and I'm also with APIPA. Um, I'm also here to support, um, resolution twenty-three zero three seventeen presented by Councilmember Driscoll about honoring AAPI Heritage Month, um, in Philadelphia. Um, I'm an Asian American who has called Philadelphia home for the last eight years, and I'm really, really glad to see council recognizing AAPI Heritage Month. The AAPI community is one of the fastest-growing communities here, and it's essential to the cultural fabric of Philadelphia and its history and should be celebrated, so thank you. Um, growing up in the Philadelphia suburbs, it was hard for me to find community or a place where I could see, uh, my heritage represented, and my family often came to Philadelphia's Chinatown to find that. Um, we went there because we could find familiar foods, and we were accepted for who we are as Asian Americans. My parents are Chinese immigrants. Um, and today, it's still a place that feels like home. It's where, you know, I get my groceries, and, um, it's also where I go to church every Sunday. Um, and we might have heard already, you know, this, there's this proposed arena at the doorstep of Chinatown. It's a direct threat to the hundred fifty years of Chinese, his, Chinatown history and heritage in Philadelphia, and it would annihilate that, um, community space for Asian Americans here in Philadelphia. Um, and I'm not, like we said, I'm not, I'm clearly not the only one who feels this way. Um, residents and businesses in Chinatown are united against the arena, and it's clear that we don't want an arena to destroy Chinatown, and this arena would destroy our city as well. Again, I'm very, very grateful that AAPI Heritage Month is being recognized in Philadelphia. Um, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in Philadelphia are so, so important to our city, they have contributed so much. Um, and it cannot, but it cannot only be symbolic. Um, it is crucial that we protect the physical spaces in Philadelphia that celebrate our AAPI heritage. Um, so, thank you all to the City Council members who are already, um, opposing the arena, but I continue to call on all of you to fight against this arena, um, to protect our hi, history here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony.
The next speaker is Kenneth Wood, commenting on two one oh eight hundred.
Morning. Good morning. My name is Kenneth Wood. I'm here to speak on bill two ten eight hundred. I'm a sixty-plus-year resident of this city, all at the same location, Kensington, now known as Old Richmond. I have nothing against teachers having parking, we need the teachers. Some of them are from outside the city and younger than us elderly. I feel more needs to be done for the elderly residents that have been here for forty, fifty, sixty-plus years. It's not right that they can't park near their homes after going to doctor appointments, food shopping, they have to park blocks away. We are at an age with health issues, and our bike-riding days are over, not like the new people coming into the city now. And one day, their bike-riding days will be over also. You have recently had shootings, at least two people shot dead over parking in this city, and numerous fights. It's all documented, check nine one one. I feel more emphasis should be placed on parking for the longtime elderly residents of this city. We feel we are being forced out of our lifelong homes. It's not our fault we can't afford eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar homes with off-street parking. It's just not right. I feel this council has not let long, I feel this council and city has let the longtime elderly residents down. Yous can do better here. Also, Engine Six, Belgrade Street and Huntington Street needs to be restored and placed back into service. We are the only fire station out of sixty-one fire stations in the city of Philadelphia without a pump or water to put out fires. We have all this overdevelopment going on in our community right now, and it's all lightweight wood construction, multifamily, multi-story high-rises. Engine Two is my first-in engine from one point two miles away and has to race down to my community to put out a fire. Two weeks ago, coming down to put out a fire on the riverfront, only blocks away from our station that had Engine Six, they were involved in an accident. So, now you're putting firefighters' lives at danger also, and had to wait for another truck because that was put out of service.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Engine Six needs to be restored. If the city can find money for street sweeping material and hire street sweepers, they can also get us our fire truck. We don't have to rely on a grant. Here's where the city ended last year's budget, four hundred ninety-two billion dollar plus.
Okay.
And we're waiting for grants to come. It's wrong. You just had the money.
Thank you.
Put the fire truck back.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony.
The next speaker is Horace Cloudon, commenting on two two one zero one five.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Horace Cloudon, a member of Mama Gale's Education Community Network and a member of Parent Community Advisory Council to the Board of Education. You know, we have three groups in this city. All of you, Group A, all of you developers east of the river, are they paying taxes or receiving abatements, all in the name of jobs? If yes, no problem. If no, then there's a problem. But how do we make up the difference? Then we have Group B, your developers we, west of the river, waiting for a ten-year tax abatement in the name of affordable housing. If the bill is passed and paying no taxes, again, how do we make up the difference? Now you have Group C, long and sure, long and short-term residents paying taxes for city services and school district. And for those who are paying no taxes, we make up the difference by doubling their taxes. In other words, they double the taxes of Group C, and then just going to tell them where your properties have doubled in value. Now, we have the city, if the city wants this formula, would, and the city wants this formula for the next ten years, who can afford this? Now we have the end of, now we have the involvement of the school district who has to sign off on their portion of the tax abatement if approved. No money goes to the schools. I'll be testifying at the school board meeting later today to open up five indoor pools that the school district owns to offer swimming as a curriculum, free access, and training facility for the community year-round. The school district only wants one pool. The tax abatement will not help this. You know, making everybody pay their fair share of taxes will help. Vote no. You know, here's, here's what's so funny about it. You say these schools are, uh, grossly underfunded. You know, you, you say that, uh, the schools have a base, have asbestos, you have all the ills of the schools. Then you want to take away money from them, you know, and then the school district is going to come to you next week and ask for money. And then it's, all this is coming off the backs of the long and short-term homeowners who only, in this group, only are paying the taxes right now. This tax abatement thing, really, you have to say no, and...
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Mama Gale Cloudon, commenting on two-
The next speaker is Mama Gail Clowden, commenting on 221015.
State your name for the record. You have 10 minutes. Thank you.
He said 10 minutes?
Yeah. Peace and love, family.
Good morning.
City council members, and I don't know the gentleman's name here, but I know that he's really busy while we're talking. I know that he has things that he has to talk to his associate about while we're here. But because some of us took their time to come here to speak, I'm asking for some respect, please. City council members, on this day of our Lord, Thursday, April 20 of 2023, I stand here remembering a great brother, a great friend, Brother Omoge Sissi Kintu, who is very, very committed to our community and to Philadelphia. I sat by him, stood by him, walked with him many times. And so I'm standing here, as I stand for those that don't speak for themselves in Philadelphia, that can't speak for themselves, that won't speak for themselves, knowing that many decisions being made at this time affect those that have the least the most, and that's those people. Abatement, 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 where will it end? Where does it end? Enough is enough. Where is the oversight? Where is equality? Where is the equity? Enough is enough. I stand here on this day of our Lord saying enough is enough. Everything is classed, everything is raised in this city. You speak about generational wealth. How do you have generational wealth if people are hanging on with nothing or close to nothing? Reparations is what the conversation should be about. You speak about, again, generational wealth. Reparations, reparations, reparations. Stop allowing people to take from those that have the least the most. Stop these abatements now. Enough is enough. Undereducation, medical apartheid, and now abatements, enough is enough.
The next speaker is Leah Clowden, commenting on 221015.
Good morning. Leah Clowden. I like to say vote no for the abatements, and I'll say that is because we have no quality in service. You charge property owners double, triple in some places where you have the neighbor that's building up, that's developing, you have a developer that comes in and builds up this property, and they're not paying any taxes. So that means you have taken their taxes and transferred it over to the neighbors. That's the best way I can explain it. We are not benefiting, low-income residents, people who need homes are benefiting, but the people who are actually paying are not benefiting from this unless it just so happened they have the homestead. For those that don't have the homestead, we're inconvenienced by the streets that are being dug up for pipelines. We're being inconvenienced by now this triple and quadrupling of new residents and their parking. We're being inconvenienced by the designs of the streets that makes no sense because somebody from another place came into the neighborhood and decided this makes sense. And I can speak on Chestnut Street and Walnut Street, the adding of parking spaces, people can't even understand where the bike lane and the parking space separates, or which side is which. This stuff is insane. There's no quality in service. You've got to rethink this abatement for these people coming in. It's not like the residents can benefit off of somebody building a home. There's no spaces for renting of commercial properties for residents who may have their home and need an extra income because now you're doubling the taxes. Things need to be changed. You have to think about it. I don't care if they give that 30% or 20% of their units. It's not enough, because those people will never be homeowners as long as you keep just giving them rent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. The next speaker is Karen Melton, commenting on 230283.
Section A for the record. You have 2 minutes.
Good morning. My name's Karen Melton. I've lived in Philadelphia since 1979. With Earth Day coming up this weekend and your vote today on Resolution 230283 to appoint Councilman Driscoll to the Gas Commission, I wanted to take the opportunity to talk about the significant impact climate change is already having and will continue to have on our city, and the critical role that PGW, the biggest municipally-owned gas utility in the country, will play in whether we can meet our city's climate goals and help to preserve a livable planet for future generations. Philadelphia's progress toward meeting our climate goals has been painfully slow, but our collective ownership of PGW gives us a unique opportunity to turn that around. We can replace fossil fuels with renewable energy at a pace that matches the urgency of the crisis, but we need creative, bold leadership from the Gas Commission and City Council to do that. Clearly, the need to transition PGW away from fossil fuels as quickly as possible involves two additional objectives: protecting consumer energy needs at an affordable rate and protecting PGW workers. Both of these latter objectives, protecting consumers and workers, are routinely used as excuses to do nothing about PGW's contributions to the climate crisis, as if a livable planet is the one thing we can afford to be without. But all three objectives must be addressed, and I hope that Councilman Driscoll will be a voice, helping to involve union workers be part of a solution that preserves good jobs while transitioning our city away from fossil fuels. Heat pumps and geothermal systems, for example, use many of the skills that PGW workers already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Gwenny Love Owens, commenting on 230316.
Good morning. Good morning. I'd like to first acknowledge my Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. Without Him, I wouldn't be here, without the prayers of my mother, my father, both deceased, and friends who have supported me from the community of Manchuria, represent the community of Manchuria. I want to acknowledge my cousin Sheila Owens, Brenda Bryant, Gwendolyn Austin, Tina Richards, my sisters and brothers who are absent, my pastor James Moore Sr. of Second Mount Zion Baptist Church, and most definitely Councilwoman Jamie Gardier. We are in Manchuria through Manchurian Community, bringing together university students, youth, professionals, and long-term residents to clean up our community, to make it a more green community, to make it serene. Through our Clean, Green, and Serene Program and our Guardian Adventures Program, we are bringing people out, we are having our neighbors interact and get to know each other, we're encouraging people to be more environmentally conscious, we're planting trees and tulips, we're looking at how we can stop the illegal dumping happening in our community, how we can become more aware of lead paint and asbestos that's not only in our soil, but also in our schools and our places of worship. We're also looking at how we can stop all of the droppings from people walking their animals, how we can prevent standing water, how we can acknowledge what trees are being decayed, because all of these things attract mosquitoes and flies, parasites, mold, and bacteria. We want to, we want to have a community that's more safe, because a community that looks beautiful attracts beauty. As we are able to inspire beauty inside each other, we're able to welcome newcomers to our community, and they also will follow the same suit. But basically, we want to inspire this new transformation that's taking place. It doesn't have to be anything negative. It's all about how do we transform our minds? How do we make a community that's welcoming? How do we make a community that could be a blueprint for the rest of the city? And so I'm just grateful for the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Christina Richards, commenting on 230316.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
I too would like to first acknowledge my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who is the beginning and the end. I stand in agreement with everything Gwenny Love spoke on. We are, we are loving Manchuria, and we hope that other neighboring communities in the city of Philadelphia will follow suit. We love Gwenny Love Worldwide Community, because Gwen starts, have started numerous gardens in our community to get us away from vacant lots. Vacant lots, yes, they are deteriorating, they are nasty, they are gross, and we don't want them. People come into our neighborhoods and dump litter, they let their animals drop feces around. We don't want that. Cleansingness is next to godliness, and godliness is next to cleansingness. When we look at our neighborhoods and we see gardens, we paint the vacant properties, we have numerous art projects that Gwenny Love starts, the children get involved, we all feel better, we all look at the community, we see bright colors on the buildings that was once ugly and you couldn't take pictures of it, and we look at the gardens, and it's something that we did. In December, Gwenny Love Worldwide came, and we planted bubs in the gardens, and now this spring and this summer, we look forward to looking at our plants. So again, Gwenny Love is awesome with what she does. I congratulate you, Gwen, on your citation, and I'm standing with you and in agreement with you to keep Manchuria looking its best. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Oak Bona Hagens, commenting on 210800.
Good morning. Hey, great morning, everyone. Oak Bona Hagens, H-A-G-I-N-S, 210800 is what I'm speaking on. Of course, public school employees should have parking, but what about what the actual students need? If I were sitting in one of those seats as a councilperson, I would be more concerned with the fact that there are no form of education being taught in Philadelphia schools to eliminate the racial wealth gap or stave off the fact that Afro-Americans' wealth, according to studies, will be at zero by 2053. Does this data bother any of you in council? If I were in one of those seats, I couldn't ignore this. For this body to ignore this reality, it actually repudiates the 13th, 14th, and 15th Reconstruction Amendments. Dr. Amos Wilson stated that each culture has a time dimension. Proof of today's time dimension for the descendants of the emancipated, otherwise known as the Afro-American, is confirmed by the racial wealth gap, and, as I stated, economic researchers calculate Afro-Americans' wealth will be zero by 2053. I want this body to know that for you to concern yourself with parking is good, but are you just as concerned with the amount of revenue that the PPA is collecting and not coming to Philadelphia? And not being, and not to mention how the Parking Authority is literally hurting people in Philadelphia. If I were a city councilperson, I would not only want to provide parking for the school employees, but I would want to make sure that all of the money collected would go to the school district first, would come to the city and not to the state for the state to divvy it out. That's what I would do if I was a councilperson.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 230282. A resolution recognizing the appointment of Albert W. Newman to the Veterans Advisory Commission. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President, on your behalf. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
May I second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second, that the resolution be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230283. A resolution appointing Councilmember Mike Driscoll to the Philadelphia Gas Commission. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion on the resolution.
Thank you again, Mr. President, and I enthusiastically, I enthusiastically move for the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230284. A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, D conveying fee simple title to 1736 North 22nd Street in the 5th Councilmanic District of the City of Philadelphia. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President, on your behalf. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230285. A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania House of Representatives and the Pennsylvania State Senate to pass HB 776 prohibiting untraceable firearms, and HB 777 banning ghost gun parts. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this resolution and pray for our city. It is passed in Harrisburg.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230287. A resolution also naming 60th Street between Market Street and Arch Street as E. Paul Sandage Way in honor of E. Paul Sandage, his 100th birthday and his more than 70 years of service to West Philadelphia. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230288. A resolution also naming the 2100 block of Federal Street Claudia Smith Sherrod Way to honor the legacy of Claudia Sherrod. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. On behalf of Member Johnson, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230289. A resolution also naming the 1500 block of Wharton Street James Matoume Way to honor the life and legacy of renowned musician, activist, and Philadelphia native, James Matoume. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. And on behalf of Member Johnson, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230292. A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Housing Authority, a D conveying fee simple title to 1 through 49 Rudy Robinson Way in the 3rd Councilmanic District. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gardier.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 230009AA. An ordinance amending Chapter 122800 of the Philadelphia Code into administrative adjudication of parking violations by further providing with respect to monetary penalties for on-street parking of semi-trailers and truck tractors. Um, Councilwoman, did you need to be recognized? All right, it's gone. Never mind. Your name was still up. I didn't know if you needed to be recognized. All right. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll. Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Brooks, Councilman Driscoll, Councilwoman Gardier, Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson, Councilman Harity, Councilman Johnson is voting aye, Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Lozada.
Councilwoman Lozada. Councilman O'Neill. Councilman Phillips. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Thomas. Councilwoman Vaughn. Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes of 15 and ayes of 0. Majority of members present. Gwenny, affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring and congratulating the champion of the week, Diana Garcia, the principal of Willard Elementary in Kensington, for being the recipient of the 2023 Lindback Award for Distinguished Principal Leadership, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, colleagues. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to hold hearings examining the rise of paper tags to thwart criminal and safety measures that allow for the safe use of our city streets by all residents, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring Dr. Kalila Johnson, principal of Overbrook High School, for receiving the 2023 Lindback Award for Distinguished Principals, introduced today by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and thanking Gwenny Love Owens on the occasion of Earth Day for her work on environmental justice and sustainability, introduced today by Councilwoman Gaultier.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President. Before I move for the adoption of the resolution, I'd like to speak for a few moments about the extraordinary woman we are honoring here today. The black and brown communities I represent experience a disproportionate amount of the climate injustices plaguing Philadelphia, and it is no coincidence that these are also the neighborhoods that endure the most gun violence and poverty. Because wrongs like illegal dumping do not just damage the environment, they breed violence. That's why the city needs community leaders like Gwenny Love Owens, who are unafraid to champion sustainability and empower neighbors to harness the power of nature to better their lives and community. Gwenny's accomplishments speak for themselves. Much of her life's work centers around developing and promoting programming that heals the earth and her community at the same time. This includes urban farming and gardening, honoring nature, community cleanups, and environmental preservation. Gwenny established Manchurian Worldwide Community Incorporated to make her community and others across the city more healthy, beautiful, and sustainable. She also planted hundreds of tulips and trees, participates in the Manchurian Urban Peace Garden, spearheads youth gardening programs across the region, and helped to found the Sustainable Business Network, which I led at one point in time. Just last week, Gwenny received a grant to expand her program Clean, Green, and Serene into Palton Village and Mill Creek. Through this program, she teaches neighbors the most sustainable way to dispose of trash and how to keep their sidewalks and lots clean. I could go on and on, but it would take all day to list all of Gwenny's work and accomplishments. Thanks to Gwenny Love's ability to demonstrate nature's power to heal and bring people together, young people in Manchuria and beyond will be able to carry on the tradition of sustainability and community building. I am so grateful for everyone that she has touched in the community and everything that she has done to promote environmental justice and sustainability, and I cannot wait to see what she does next. I can think of few better ways to acknowledge Earth Day than by honoring this true homegrown hero of environmental justice. Gwenny, can you please stand so that we can honor you properly? And with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution proclaiming May 2023 is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Philadelphia to pay tribute to the rich history and significant contributions made by generations of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to our country, Commonwealth, and city, introduced today by Councilman Driscoll.
Chair recognizes Councilman Driscoll.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And any speeches on behalf of the minority? Speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President. Yesterday, the city and I announced a settlement with IBID regarding the University City Town Homes and my Affordable Housing Preservation overlay legislation. This has been one of the biggest fights I have taken on since assuming office, and no one in government worked harder to protect the rights of the tenants than I and the City Law Department. I began advocating for the UC Town Homes residents in late 2020 and never stopped, even when our lawyers told me I had to remain publicly silent. In fact, I did the math and discovered that my team and I have spent well over 1,000 hours engaging the residents, participating in negotiations, and meeting with officials from all levels of government. And even though true equity means no one gets displaced from their home, this settlement is a historic win. IBID will give the city a portion of the town home site where we will build a 100% permanently affordable housing property and community green space in the heart of an amenity-rich area of opportunity undergoing rapid gentrification. And since the city will own the land the new affordable housing site will be built on, we will never see low-income residents displaced from this valuable site again. The settlement also gives tenants of the UC Town Homes $3.5 million over and above their relocation costs for housing needs. While no amount of money can make up for losing your home and community, I am pleased the residents will have the financial resources they need to help them settle in an area of their choosing. The monumental victory would not be possible without the strength of the UC Town Homes residents, who refuse to be bulldozed by corporate interests and never stop fighting for what they deserve. To the UC Town Homes residents and all of my constituents, know that I hear you, I see you, and I have not and will not stop fighting for what you deserve, no matter how long it takes or how many interests stand in our way. The UC Town Homes is just one of many temporary affordable housing complexes at risk of going offline in the next decade. In fact, as many as 13,000 families across Philadelphia may lose their homes because of expiring affordability contracts in the next decade. That is why, if nothing else, this settlement proves it is vital that the city take a bolder and more proactive approach to affordable housing preservation. And I look forward to working with you all to do just that through the People's Preservation Package, which we will consider in Monday's Housing Committee hearing. I also call on our state and federal partners to invest in permanent, deeply affordable housing. The city cannot and should not stand alone. Thank you to the City Law Department, the Department of Planning and Development, and the Kenny Administration for helping to achieve this historic outcome. Thank you to the UC Town Homes residents and neighbors for their unwavering activism around this issue. You inspire me each and every day, and I will always stand with you. And thank you to my council colleagues who stood by me as I took on this unprecedented fight. No matter how many years it takes, I'll never stop pushing back against the immense economic forces that seek to catapult working-class, black and brown residents out of the neighborhoods their families have called home for generations. We are not disposable, and it is time we are treated with the consideration we deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. And congratulations. There appears to be no additional speeches on behalf of the majority. Going once, going twice. Councilwoman? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Vaughn.
America Red Cross, give blood and help save lives. Philadelphia City Council will be holding a blood drive on Friday, May 12, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. at 140 JFK Boulevard in Room 201. Please come and support this extremely important endeavor, and if you want to schedule an appointment, you can contact my office at 215-686-3450. They are really in need of blood types O, B, and A. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That concludes the speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. With that, the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the council standard adjourn until Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved to probably second. The council standard adjourn until Thursday, April 27, 2023, 10:00 a.m. All in favor indicate by saying aye. All of those opposed, ayes have it. Most of care. Thank you all very much.